Yes, go ahead, Tony.
Now, something came up on the screen to check continue. Should we check continue here?
Yes.
Yes, because you're blotted out. I can't see if I don't push.
Tells you you leave the meeting if you don't. It's a choice of continue or leave meeting.
Yeah, you gotta push continue.
Right.
All right, ready to go?
Because of the recording.
Yep, there we go. This virtual meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6:02 PM. My name is Tony Arklevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform the service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are Joe Fitzgerald's not here, correct?
No, he's not here.
Okay, is Brian here?
Brian is, Brian is not here.
Okay, Donna Martin is here. Mary Newbauer is here. Zari here?
No.
Okay, Anthony Tampon, who's a new member, an alternate member, is with us this evening. Welcome, Anthony. So we have four, including myself, we have four members here, so that's in quorum. We're able to conduct business. Ryan Cafferty's out, Joe Fitzgerald is out, Nahari is out. Okay, there will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members, and not other speakers or audience members. A professional demeanor is expected. Okay, first order of business, approve the minutes for the July 8th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I may make a motion.
Donna?
I'll second.
Mary, second. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Approved 4-0. Okay. We have three items on the agenda this evening. First applicant is, I know he's here, we heard him, Frederick Becker. He still here, Frederick? Uh oh.
Yes, we're here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm on like two phones, my daughters and my wife's. I don't, I've never done this, helping me out.
That's all right. I've done it about 10 times and I still get mixed up, so don't worry about it, Frederick.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Frederick Becker, applicant, 23 Court Avenue, Zone R1, Ward 1, SBL 56.88-5-19. The owner is seeking relief from the required five-foot side yard setback to two and a half feet side yard setback to put up a 12 by 20 metal prefab carport. Now, I took a ride up, I took a ride up and checked your property out, Frederick. You already had the carport installed, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so it's not, you're not getting permission to put up, you're getting permission to have a setback for an existing carport that's been put into place.
Yes, sir, because I came up from Florida. I'm originally from here, Port Union I live, but making it sure, but where I live gated community carports were, I always thought they, you know, they weren't permanent structures. So I made an honest mistake and a hardship because lots are so close here. So I'm asking from a five-foot back two and a half foot, the carport.
Okay, and as I said, I took a ride up. Things are pretty close up there, Frederick. Everybody's driveway seems to be right in line of the next house, but you're, you're the only carport that I saw.
Yes, sir.
But things are pretty close there for set.
Very close.
I don't, I didn't see too many five-foot side yard setbacks. So it's, board, it's, it's up, it's two and a half feet, it's two and a half feet where it's existing now, it's two and a half feet, Frederick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions of Frederick at this point?
I have a question. I guess he put this up without getting a permit or to get the variance, so it's been up there? How long has it been up?
How long has it been up, Frederick?
Excuse me, sir?
How long has the carport been up?
Oh, probably about a month and a half. Would say a month and a half.
And let me guess how you ended up here before, before us. Let me put an educated guess together. One of the neighbors called Mr. Kitchen and complained. My close?
Yes, sir.
How did I know something like that?
Yeah, well, if I was his neighbor.
What's that, Frederick?
Made an honest mistake. I didn't realize, I've never lived in the city of Kingston before. I always in the town of Mesophares, worked for the town of Mesophares Highway and didn't know the rules. And like I stated just before, I lived in a gated community in Florida.
Yep.
There was no, because it wasn't considered permanent structure, so you didn't have to get a permit because did make an honest mistake. I put it close to my neighbor's ranch, which I'll take full blame.
You know what?
Cut all the lads off.
You know what they, you know what they told, well, forget her name, Dorothy. Don't you, you're not in Kansas anymore, Dorothy, so you're not in Florida, so you're in.
I know, I know. I made an honest mistake.
I know you did. Did you have a question? Anybody else have a question for Frederick?
Look, I, did he even ask his neighbor that he was going to tell him that he was putting a carport up? You know, let him know. I mean, that's, that's so close to that yard. I took a look on, you know, I was looking at the Google, Google, the satellite pictures of that property. And, you know, his, the neighbor's front door is very close there, the, the whole, so that whole area is just, you know, right on top of everything, so.
So, but that's why he's asking for a two and a half foot side yard setback. It's, you know, it's not exorbitant, it's 50% reduction. I mean, you're, you're making a lot of state, quite honestly, you're making a lot of statements, Donna. Do you have a question?
Is it a closed carport? Is it closed on the sides or is it open?
It's open. Correct, Frederick? It looked open to me.
Sure.
Now, there is a fence up, your neighbor, I'm assuming the neighbor that complained is the one, if you're looking at your house, it's to the left. She has a fence, she has a fence up, I noticed, so it is shielded from her view.
Okay.
Correct. Correct. And I didn't know I have to notice anybody. I didn't, I just, I made a mistake, an honest mistake.
We, we heard you loud and clear, Fred. We know it's a mistake. That's why you're here tonight. Does anyone else, Anthony or Mary, have a question for Frederick?
No.
Go.
I, I do. The, I'm trying to find actually the setbacks on, on this district right now, but is, is there a front yard?
No.
Issue here as well?
No.
Okay, because I, you know, I just drove past it like an hour ago and that thing is like very close to the street. So the only issue we have is the side yard issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the side yard setback reduction from five feet to two and a half feet at this point? Do I have a motion?
I'll move, your person.
Mary, second. For voting purposes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Posted. Okay, it's carried 4-0, so Frederick, you learned a hard lesson, so make sure anything regarding your yard or construction in your yard, a shed or anything like that, we're very strict in the city of Kingston, so you've got to, you've got to call Mr. Kitchen, all right?
Yes, and I want to first and foremost, I want to thank the zoning enforcer officer Eric Kitchen, City of Kingston for being so understanding to this matter. And you guys as well, because as I stated, I've never lived in this city and the lots are very close. I've never lived in a small density like this. That was joining driveways like.
How long, how long you been here, how long you been here in Kingston?
Three years. My daughter, which is with me now, found me this house. I was living, I retired from New York State and I retired and moved to Florida 10 years ago and my daughter found me the house up here in this neighborhood. And I've never lived in Kingston, but, and you know, I never knew the rules here or whatever. I'm a Port Union guy. Lived there all my life and born and bred there, but.
They must have rules in Port Union. Is it the Wild West over there or what?
Well, we're country people over there. We're not city people, but you know.
All right. Quit while you're ahead, Frederick.
I know, and I want to thank you all so much again. I truly appreciate it. Eric and all yous, thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, the next applicant, Eric. I didn't ask for any public comment on that one. You didn't remind me, Eric. Is there any public comment on Mr. Fred Becker's application? Okay, you gotta, please remind me, board. Don't be shy. Remind me, Eric and board, in the public. I don't, I don't see anybody, so I'm, forget.
I, I, can I interrupt you just for a quick second? I just want to tell Fred that he doesn't have to stand in line, he can go now.
Okay.
And Fred, I will, Freddie, I will get you a letter out saying that your variance was approved, okay?
Sure, and I want to thank you all very much.
Okay, all right. Our next applicant.
Have a good night, Fred. Take care. Bye bye.
Allison Hoffman. Eric, do we have?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Eric, Allison Hoffman.
Yep, we're here. How you doing? It's Michael Lockwood. Hold on, my camera's not, it's gonna be on. There it is. Hey, that's Michael Lockwood on The Architect and Allison Hoffman's here as well.
Okay, we've got Allison Hoffman applicant, six Browning Terrace, Zone R1, Ward 1, SBL 56.89-1-46. The owner is seeking a variance from Chapter 4059C8 to construct an eight-foot-high fence in the side yard of her home from the allowable six and a half fence height. You also took a ride up here to Browning Terrace and your whole yard is enclosed by fence currently, correct?
Yes.
Now, this fence that's running parallel to Miller Lane, is that the fence that you want to increase to eight-foot high?
Yes, it is.
Currently, what is the height of that fence right now?
Four foot.
Okay, so it's four foot, so you want another eight or feet. I mean, you can have six and a half. You understand that, right? You have, you can have, you know, you don't believe six and a half will be sufficient?
Well, she just got done doing complete landscaping in the backyard and, and also there's, there's some real good, because of the elevation change going up Miller's Lane, as you're coming down the hill, there's, there's complete visibility of the backyard and her bedroom is also positioned on the back, the back wall. And it's just, you know, so the headlights coming down that road go into her, into her windows as well. And due to the fact that deer tend to eat, eat your gardens and landscaping, it's, it seems they would have no trouble typically jumping a six and a half foot fence, but an eight-foot fence could certainly deter that. But it's really more for privacy issue of the, you know, of her in the backyard and residence.
How many linear feet would that be, increasing it to eight feet? How many linear feet?
Oh, along that line, I don't, I'd have to pull the drawing up. Don't recall.
Looked like a pretty good span.
It's very long, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a double lot.
Let me see. One moment. It looks like it's right on the drawing, 84 feet.
Eighty-four?
Yep.
Is that the, that's the longest side, isn't it?
Yes, along Miller, parallel with Miller's Lane.
Yeah, that's 84 feet. Okay, board members, questions?
Public comment?
Comment and question?
Public comment.
No, we do public after we question the applicants.
Okay, so can I pop in again? Tony, you know, I'm up on Third Avenue, so my house is quite on a low end because Fourth Avenue is about, I don't know, maybe 40, 50 feet up in the air. So the people on Fourth Avenue can look into my second floor bedroom window. They can see my whole inside yard and in addition to anything that's on my property. I currently just have a regular, regulated fence on my property. I'm not looking to build a 30-foot-high fence so that no one can see into my yard. You're living in the city, so it's, it's not an urban area. You don't have a lot of property around you. I don't see the need to put an eight-foot fence. I mean, deer is part of the city living also. We have them here. And along with wild turkeys and everything else that can trap, you know, trample through your yard. Six and a half foot with some nice, nice greenery trees that grow quick would cover it nicely. I mean, I, I don't see the need for eight feet.
Okay.
Donna, I can't, I agree too. I've walked that area. I live up by this area. And I've come down Miller's Lane. I understand what you're saying about cars coming in down Miller's Lane, but I don't think that's going to alleviate any light getting in there. Because Miller's Lane comes down and slopes around and it's still quite high up there. So I don't think if it's a six and a half foot fence, eight-foot fence, 10-foot fence is not going to alleviate any lights coming in. And like Donna said, we're, we live in the city of Kingston. They're not large lots, it's not farms. You know, people aren't purposely going, I would hope, hop into their third floor, second floor or on the roof to look into somebody's backyard. So I agree with Donna. I think that six and a half feet, I don't see why you need that extra foot and a half. I don't think it's going to alleviate anything.
Okay.
Can I, can I answer that? May I please answer? When I was taking the pictures for, you know, the application, I went across the street and just on the lawn, you can see it, and people walking by on that other side of the street, you could see it. So it's not even a matter of their bedroom windows. I realize that's, you know.
You know what I did with my house is I eliminated the windows on my street side and put little windows up so no one could see into the front of my house. So I mean, there's always, there's always that, you know, change, but you, you know, you, you have to kind of go with the aesthetics that you have in the house that you bought in the property.
Okay.
And I see also that you've got about a four-foot fence right now. You walk on somebody's lawn up the road there, you're going to be able to see right directly down in there. I don't think, I don't think a 10-foot fence is necessary at this point. I mean, I think six and a half would.
Eight foot.
Eight foot.
I'm sorry, eight foot. I said 10, I'm sorry. Eight-foot fence would make much of a difference.
Okay, Anthony, would you like to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, you know, I agree that the, the eight-foot fence doesn't go along with the character of the neighborhood. You know, it would look like a barricade coming down Miller's Lane. That property has some elevation change from Miller's Lane as you come up Miller's Lane. So the height from the road would be closer to 10 foot or more from Miller's Lane if that was an eight-foot fence. It would just look ridiculous and out of place in that space. You know, I would, I would recommend to applicant to put in some tall shrubby, you know, tall shrubs that kind of break, you know, you get the screening that you're looking for. But a fence, a fence taller than the six and a half feet is just, you know, not character appropriate for that neighborhood alone.
Thank you.
One other point, Tony. I'm looking at, I'm looking at a picture of it and along the backside of the house or the other side, which is, I guess, your other side of your house, but blocking off from the other, from your neighbors, what height is that fence?
It's six feet.
Six feet, okay.
Side yard.
So, yeah, the side, backside yard here.
I didn't know that I could do six and a half feet when I was putting that up. I got, that's a whole other story, but I didn't know that I could do that. Otherwise, I would have put six and a half.
Thought the rear fence would be.
Okay.
My point is that if you do an eight-foot on one side and you have six on the other, again, it's not going to fit into the scheme of the neighborhood. It's going to kind of look off balance, so.
Now, now that I'm thinking of it, do we have anybody in, from the public that would like to comment on this? Any neighbors or anyone else? No, hearing no. Do we have any other questions for Allison at this point? Or do you have anything else to say, Allison, that hasn't been said already?
No.
All right.
The writing, the writing is on the fence.
That would be graffiti, so we don't.
No other issue.
So, do I have a motion to approve a variance from 4059C8 to construct an eight-foot-high fence on the side yard of Allison Hoffman's home from the allowable six and a half? For voting purposes, a motion, please?
So a public comment, huh?
No, I asked.
Okay, sorry.
Do I have a motion? Somebody for voting purposes?
I'll move.
Are you, Mary?
That's me.
All right, Mary, second. I'm getting a.
This is to vote, not, not an approval.
Right, to vote.
Just to vote. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, the motion is to approve, so we have a motion to approve. Everyone, anyone in favor, please say aye. Zero, assuming not to approve is four?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Variance is denied, zero, four. Okay, I, I didn't make the comment because I didn't want to say it before the vote, but, you know, fences are becoming quite an issue in Kingston and I see them coming up all over. And we had a case in a neighborhood close by to you over on Pearl Street and it was quite, quite a lively consideration and eventually was not approved too. So just, I don't want you to think that you're being isolated. It was not an approval of an eight-foot-high fence in your neighborhood. Not exactly in the exact neighborhood, but close by, so, all right? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we get into, I'm assuming we have two attorneys in the audience. David Gordon and John Capello.
Yep.
Are both you gentlemen here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have on the agenda the applicant, David Gordon on behalf of Michael and Gail Flynn, who live at 30, I think it's 34. Let me find it. They live right across from the Blue Court Commons. Michael and Gail Flynn and David Gordon represents Michael and Gail. And the applicant is seeking an appeal of the ZEO determination pursuant to 40554F2 of the City of Kingston, which sets the procedures for appeal, the zoning code. And the deal is dated June 18th, 2021 regarding Blue Stone Commons. Okay, we're going to hear from both attorneys. Get my paperwork here. Okay, Michael and Gail Flynn live at 34 Blue Stone Court across the street from the proposed Blue Stone Commons. And Mr. Gordon represents them. And Mr. Gordon is, as I said, is seeking an appeal of the ZEO determination pursuant to Blue Stone Commons. And Mr. Gordon is asking the ZBA to issue two determinations of which the board can reverse, affirm or modify the determination of the ZEO zoning enforcement officer. The two determinations Mr. Gordon is asking for is areas qualifying as quote usable open space, end quote, must measure at least 40 feet in their smaller dimension. And accordingly, the project does not meet the requirement for usable open space. That's the one, number one determination that he is seeking. The second one is site plan approval requires a demonstration that both the interior and exterior of the building will meet accessibility requirements for people with disabilities. Did I summarize that accurately, Mr. Gordon?
You did. Can you hear me? Go ahead, it's unmuted.
We can hear you, yes.
Mr. Chairman, you've got that right.
Okay, thank you.
And Tony, if I could just jump in for a minute, just to outline the procedure that counsel in my office have discussed and agreed upon. You know, given, you know, certain deadlines that are set forth in the code, what we have agreed to is that both attorneys have submitted written arguments. I assume that everyone on the board has received those written arguments. Can we just confirm that everyone has received them?
Yes.
Okay, both attorneys will be given the opportunity to speak this evening and summarize those arguments and supplement them as they deem appropriate. You will hear public comment tonight. I believe the most appropriate sequence would be that the public would comment after counsel makes their initial presentations. After the public has commented, the board can inquire of either of the attorneys and seek additional information. If the board has any questions for myself prior to or during that questioning, we can go into an attorney-client session to discuss the matters and then return to further inquire of counsel. My expectation is that we will leave the record open after the conclusion of tonight's meeting and give counsel both an opportunity to address any further issues and for both of them to submit any further documentation within 10 days of the close of tonight's hearing.
So they, Dan, so the attorneys will be given a second opportunity to submit supplemental information because we've already received one supplemental information from them.
Correct, but they will be given an opportunity to address in writing any issues that are raised either by the public this evening or questions or clarification that is sought by the board this evening.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was hearing you correctly. They would be given.
Okay. Then we will adjourn the matter for the October meeting and hopefully render a determination at the October meeting, which would be within the 62-day limit that is set forth in the statute. The board and myself will have the opportunity to discuss both tonight in private and hopefully, if necessary, between today's meeting and the next meeting to deliberate and clarify any issues. And then a written decision on the appeal will be prepared, circulated and hopefully voted on by the board at the October meeting.
Okay, Dan, you put the words right out of my mouth because I was going to start quoting your August 23rd, 2021 letter and I didn't have to do that, so that's good.
Are there any questions from the board about the procedure that we are anticipating following with regard to the appeal?
Yeah.
And any questions from counsel or any clarification that either attorney needs?
I just, I just wanted to mention one thing, Dan. In your letter, you mentioned that the effect, there's a stay and the effect of the stay is that until further notice, no further formal action will be taken by city boards and commissions regarding pending application related to the project.
And the stay was discussed with both attorneys and as indicated in that letter, um, the stay really doesn't at this point have any practical um impact, given the status of the um proceedings in front of the planning board. Um, it does not preclude the applicant from continuing to um, you know, gather and submit information that ultimately will be considered by the planning board. But at this point, um, Blue Stone Commons is not on the planning board agenda um for this month and formal action by the planning board um will be delayed until this board makes a determination on the appeal.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And the only thing I want to add is, and I always do this when we have attorneys making presentations, not just for this particular meeting, but I request that all the parties be succinct and to the point. And keep in mind, the board is not, are not attorneys and we are not judges, so please keep it uh to, to our level of understanding and um be succinct and to the point. I want to ask the board, does the board, uh, all the members of the board, did they get in their packet? Uh, Eric Kitchen, Mr. Kitchen's interpretation?
Correct.
Us tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, I received it.
Everybody has that and has read it. It's quite a lengthy determination. Um, and uh basically it involves referencing chapter four oh five dash three and the definition of usable open space. So that's what I believe Mr. Gordon and Mr. Capello will be talking about this evening, although we do have the A D A matter uh for the determination also. And Mr. Kitchen included that in his interpretation. So we have um Mr. Gordon up first. Could you state your name and address, please, for us?
Yeah, my name is David Gordon. Uh, my law, my law firm address is forty-two Catherine Street in Kingston. And the chairman has already stated uh that I'm representing the Flins on this matter. We live across the street from the project.
Um. Okay, floor is yours.
Excuse me?
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, first I want to clarify, I think the chair alluded to this, but I'll just make clear that of the two matters that are under appeal, um, tonight I'm going to be discussing only the matter relating to the usable open space. The A D A matter will be considered uh submitted in writing. Uh, I, I want to take the time tonight to, to highlight the uh, the open space issues, which I think are actually really uh important, both for this project and also going forward uh for the city. Um, I'm going to, th- and this is going to be fairly short. We've already laid out um, uh, the argument in pretty significant detail. I just want to touch on three distinct aspects of this argument and really only spend a few minutes on each one. The first would be just be the linguistic um issues relating to the definition here, which is um, really comes down to the concept of uh the uh minimum dimension of, of forty feet. Secondly, I'd like to talk about what this means in real terms for the project itself. And thirdly, I'd like to talk about what this means in terms of the presidential importance for this particular um requirement, the usable open space requirement in general, depending on uh if the Z B A were to um uphold the uh, the determination by the zoning officer. So first, on the linguistics, the basic linguistic requirement here is that the minimum dimension of usable open space be at least forty feet. And um, I, I'm not sure, I, I was actually going to raise this point really on my second uh section relating to the project, but I'm going to be working off of a drawing of usable open space that the applicant has provided as part of its um site plan. Um, uh, application, designated S P ten. On its, uh, I'm not sure if the board has this available to it, but it's very, very helpful. It shows sort of usable open space outlined in pink. Um, and if you've got it, it'll just make the presentation a little bit easier. Otherwise, I can describe some of the features that.
You could just tell us what, what's represented and how many square feet it is, uh, if, that you're able to do that?
I, I'll try to do it as I'm going along, yes. But uh, for this section, which is just on the linguistics, what the, what the board should know is that of the majority of the open space that's being provided here is being provided in a series of basically either sidewalks or other forms of walking paths, which I'll describe in more detail, which are five feet wide. And so what you're looking at is um, uh, paths that are basically five feet wide. And forgive me if I missed the, the exact number of the length, but it would be um thousands of feet in length. Um, and again, this is going to provide the uh majority of the open space on the project. Um, the uh, but to get back to the, the, the dictionary definition of the minimum dimension being forty feet, um, the basic linguistics here is that if, if you're dealing with a two-dimensional and everything we're dealing with here is two-dimensional, you're talking about essentially an aerial surface and so by definition, it's two-dimensional. We can call them length and width. Uh, I'll, in the course of this discussion, I'll use the word width as just the default term for the shorter dimension in the two-dimensional space. Um. The basic concept of a minimum dimension of forty feet would typically imply and, and counsel for the, for, for the uh applicant and also perhaps the building inspector might disagree, but I would suggest to the board that when you deal with a minimum dimension of forty feet, you're talking about the, the smaller dimension of the width should be at least forty feet, that no dimension should be less than forty feet. That's, that, I would suggest that that's the most natural um linguistic interpretation, although this is not the uh, without meaning any criticism, it's not the best crafted and clearest definition, but um, the minimum dimension forty feet means you're not going to typically have something that's five feet in width, that, that is just different concept. And so I would just suggest to the board that the most basic linguistic um uh, uh interpretation is that each dimension should be at least forty feet. The minimum dimension must be forty feet, so the maximum dimension will be forty feet as well. Um, again, may have whatever interpretations you want on that, but I, I, I think that's the most natural. Secondly, with respect to the project, and this is really where the um the, the site plan comes in. The applicant is proposing essentially to fulfill the open space requirement, which in total, I mean, uh, uh, on an individual, um, for each individual uh unit, it's four hundred square feet. In total here, it's a little more than eighteen thousand uh square feet. I think it's eighteen thousand four hundred square feet. Um, of that eighteen thousand four hundred square feet that's required, approximately twelve thousand of square feet, so approximately two-thirds of the requirement is taken up by a series of paths. Um, among those paths is a kind of a circumferential um sidewalk that basically, for those of you who don't have any site plan at all, um, this essentially consists of uh four buildings um located in roughly a square. The center of the project is a parking lot. And there are buffers around the project, particularly uh, some of them are grass and some of them are, are on the north part is a driveway. Um, there is a circumferential, circum- circumference um uh sidewalk, which is um the majority of the sidewalk. And then there are sidewalks along going north, south, along the sides of the parking lot. And then there are crosswalks going actually through the parking lot. And again, the sum total of all this is approximately uh twelve thousand square, eleven, twelve thousand square.
You're calling these paths or sidewalks?
Well, uh, in general, they're sidewalks, but I would not call it, the parts that actually cross the parking lot are not side, they're, I, I'm working off of the site plan, Mr. Chairman, and so I'm assuming and counsel can correct me or the um the project uh, technical people can correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm presuming that the parts that cross the parking lot are just sort of painted painted paths. I don't know what they are, but I'm assuming it's not any sort of a physical or certainly not a raised sidewalk. It's literally crossing the parking lot. And there are four of them. Um, and so I'm, I'm just presuming that it's some sort of a painted footpath of some type.
I thought, I, I thought I heard, the reason I asked, I thought I heard you say that twelve thousand square feet of, of of the count of open space are pa- are predominantly paths.
Yes, they're all, well, as in walking path, uh, five foot wide walkways of some, of either what we would consider to be a physical sidewalk of, you know, pavement uh that's maybe separated, that, that's separate from uh adjacent grass, for example. But some of them are going to be, including sidewalks along the parking lot, again, on the east, east and west side of the parking lot. But, but there will be four paths crossing the parking lot that I'm assuming are basically asphalt consistent with the parking lot that are painted. That's my assumption. So I'm, I'm combining those two together, but there actually are separate considerations in them because I mean, one of the issues with crossing the parking lot is you're part of the parking lot physically and also there is a separate um zoning definition, zoning phrase is part of the definition that excludes, uh, directly excludes driveways from uh usable open space. So I would suggest that those, that those crossed pathways um should be in some ways considered separate as just being you know, not a part of the definition at all. But the basic concept is that you've got two-thirds of the open space um requirement and half of all the open space, more than half, um, used up with these five foot wide um basically walking paths as well, is what they've been used for to connect the things that you use to connect the buildings and the doors of the um project and the, and the, the habitations to the outside to the parking lot, et cetera. And mo- most of the rest of it is going to be on the southern, um, the southern setback. Uh, and so a board, I think, should consider very carefully the, the implications of that. Um, and it's important for the board to, and I know you will, um, understand the purpose of the open space requirement. It's not just a, a detail that, that's, that's part of the zoning code. The purpose is so that to guarantee that the people who live in the project have sufficient open space for recreational purposes. And um the, the secondary purpose of this requirement is that the city doesn't have to. I mean, if they, if people need recreation, if, if, if the developers don't provide the recreational resources themselves, the city must. And I would also point out, as we did in our supplemental comment, that to the extent that we're talking about children's recreational needs, um, children have a very limited capacity or much more so than adults to travel through the city for alternative areas of recreation. Um, they can to some extent, of course, and perhaps growing up, some of us did a lot of that. But there, there's a limited extent to which we want to, to a lot of that. And for that reason, the provision of onsite recreational facilities is very important, very valuable. And so the board, to the extent that we get away from linguistics and get more into what's actually happening on the ground, the board should review this proposal and, and, and these interpretations, more importantly, within that light, the light of providing necessary recreational space. And the fact that, again, you, you know, basically all coming from this, these paths, sidewalks slash paths, five foot wide and the um, to some extent the buffer, um, some of which is forty feet wide, some of which is legitimate forty feet wide, some of which i- is not, um, some of which is less, depending on the actual configuration of the building, et cetera. Um, so we wanted to make that, we want the board to essentially go into this uh determination, not just with the linguistics in mind, but also with that, with that site plan in mind and with the, you know, with, with the impact interpretation on what this means on the ground. And the other interpretation I request the board to continue to remember linguistically is that if you were to agree with the um zoning officer and the applicant that the forty feet really applies to the length to the, to the long, that the longer dimension must be at least forty feet. The implication is that there is no minimum width, and in fact, you're seeing that on a five-foot wide sidewalk, but it could be theoretically less than five feet. It could be four feet between the edge of the building and, you know, something else, a, a different uh, uh, an outbuilding or something like that. It could be ve- very, very narrow alley. There is literally, at that point, no minimum if the forty feet were applied to the, what, what was the minimum requirement of the length, for example. And uh, I would suggest that you keep that in mind and you're seeing it here as defining essentially two-thirds of the, of, of, of the required open space in the project. Um, we, i- in our appeal, we also go into some descriptive language about the types of recreation that, that would be frustrating here. I'm not going to go into too much detail on that here. Obviously, for any of us who've ever had, you know, eight-year-olds, ten-year-olds, twelve-year-olds, you want your kids to be able to go out and kick a soccer ball around or throw a frisbee or just run or whatever. And um, the board should carefully consider as to whether this type of arrangement is conducive to that. Um, I would also point out, um, again, in terms of the specifics of this project and the interpretation that the zoning officer has provided, that very clearly we have um a lot of the open space, a lot of the sidewalks and certainly the crosswalks in very, very close proximity to or actually in the areas that are used for driving and parking on the property. And um, I would just suggest that especially as we talk about kids running around, throwing frisbees, kicking soccer balls, whatever they do. Um, that it is, um, I would think that the, that the board and the city would want to strengthen and maximize the separation of the recreational space that's being provided here from automobile traffic and automobile access. Um, for the purposes. I'm sorry?
Mr. Gordon, I just had a question for you. You, you're talking, you're discussing a lot. It's, it's difficult to not have it in front of us to see exactly.
Okay.
You're talking about, but have you done a calculation on what you feel the usable open space is on that proposed development?
Um, I haven't calculated it, but I can tell, I can tell you that um, from my perspective, um, there are, in the southwest corner of the project, there's, there's an area that is, appears to be at least forty feet wide, just forty feet wide and quite a bit longer. This is, this is laid out along the southern boundary of the project, stretching essentially east-west. Um, it looks like, as I'm looking at it now, it's probably about uh, maybe twenty-five hundred square feet. Um. Now, in, in the best of all worlds, and if, if I were on the common council, I would suggest, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with sidewalks per se, and they probably ought to be some provision for linear bike paths. This is not under the current definition, but I think there is some value to those, but a limited value, and I would think that would be worthwhile to assign, but under the current definition, I would say the only usable open space they have is in that southwest corner.
Which is one five hundred square feet approximately.
I think so. It looks like maybe forty-five by forty-two, but it's, it's difficult for me to see. The numbers are too small as I'm looking at it now, but take a look at the southwest corner. At, at some point, as you go east from that corner, um, the, the um uh, the setback or the, the separation of, from the, the project from the, the retaining wall dips dramatically from forty feet, probably down to close to thirty feet. And at that point, um, you would no longer have that usable open space, so.
The, the reason I ask is Mr. Kitchen and his determination uh goes a great length and a couple paragraphs of explicitly citing areas and square foot and coming up with a total, I think of about twenty-two thousand square feet, so.
That's right.
There's quite a difference between twenty-two thousand and twenty-five hundred, so.
Well, for, I, I would suggest to the chair and to the board that for starters, if you have a five-foot wide pad that in total, pads, plural, that in total uh, come to roughly, give or take twelve thousand square feet, I think maybe eleven thousand four hundred or whatever. I would suggest to the chair that that right there is most of the difference between what I've suggested and what the um, and what the Z E O has, has found. And if you want to see the rest of the difference, it would be the extension of that southern setback from the point where I um, would cut it off, where it goes to, let's say, thirty feet in width all the way to the eastern edge. At that point, you have more than enough to get you past the eighteen thousand square foot requirement. And so basically what you're talking about here is paths and the southern um, the southern setback and, and that's what you're deciding to. And, and that's what you're deciding today is whether this is what you're looking for, whether, again, setting aside the linguistics, what you're deciding today is whether this is what you want and what, what the city wants or, or not. That, those, that's where the numbers come out on this chair, we didn't, we didn't let them out.
All right, um, do you have anything else that you, I think you've really made your point quite explicit?
Very quickly, um, I, I wanted to, I, I wanted to say where this, where this leads. Um, the rulings that have come down, I want to, I want to discuss two of them really briefly. One is, again, this ruling about the, um, the paths crossing the parking lot. In the Z E O determination, he actually didn't find that they were open space, although usable open space, although he included it in total. What he found was that they connected usable open space areas. And so I want to highlight that for the board for two reasons. One, there's no provision for that in the code, and it, it's obviously problematic, but I want to highlight it for another reason. Um, with, with all respect, both the application here for the reasons I've stated and the Z E O's determination indicate, well, a, a fairly lax approach to the provision of usable open space. And in fact, other developers might pick this up. And the bottom line is, what's going to happen in the future is that any developer hearing this and, and going off of these decisions, the Z E O's decision, is going to basically use the setbacks as usable open space and maybe some sidewalk, and that's what it comes down to. And the decision will result necessarily almost going forward that there will be no separate conscious provision of usable open space. It's all included in these other resources that are otherwise a part of the project. You essentially be writing out a usable open space provision out of the code, things that are five feet wide and in new setbacks. And as this, as this site plan indicates, you can cover most of, actually all of the requirement just with that. And so what any developer is going to do going forward is just not bother with the rest of it.
I think, I think you've made that point quite clear, and we will be considering that.
Okay.
I think what you said in your letter is the Z E O has an expansive definition of usable open space. I think we could summarize it that way from your letter.
Fair enough, and one that would affect what actually happens on the ground to a great degree.
Expansive definition, that's, and that's where the question lies.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Okay, we now have, um, John Capello, who represents, uh, the Blue Stone Commons Development Plan. And, um, you agree every, you agree totally with, with Mr. Gordon said, I assume, right?
E- except for the first twenty-five minutes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, everyone. Once again, for the record, it's John Capello with Jacobowitz and Gubitz. Our office is at one five eight Orange Avenue in Walden. I'm here on behalf of developers and applicants of Blue Stone, uh, comments. I am going to be also, you know, fairly brief, because what I really want to highlight are what the issues that are before this board. Uh, Mr. Gordon's presentation, um, ignored the fact that a planning board has been looking at all of the issues that he raised. You know, there's no intention of the developer to, um, not provide appropriate, uh, space and balance the need for housing in the city of Kingston uh, with the need for recreation and to provide for the residents of this development. That is what the planning board has been doing. The specific layout of the open space and the connections is a planning board issue as part of a site plan issue. What you're here for tonight is to interpret what the word forty-foot minimum dimension means. Now, as I provided in my presentation, the standard that your board has to apply, um, is exactly the standard that, um, C E O, Z E O Kitchen applied is the most expansive, uh, definition. The New York State law is crystal clear, and it was provided in, uh, my submissions, that zoning is in derogation of the common law. Any ambiguities in that law have to be resolved in favor of the property owner. That doesn't mean the layout isn't reviewed by the planning board and they don't have comments, but it means the definition and the words that you're interpreting have to give, have to be interpreted in a manner that resolves any ambiguity in favor of the property owner. In Mr. Gordon's own words, he admitted that this is not the best drafted or written requirement, which means what? That it is ambiguous. Now, so that's standard number one. Standard number two, you have to read it in a manner that makes sense. Under Mr. Gordon's request to you, every single piece of open space needs to be at least forty by forty. So therefore, a bocce court, as Mr. Interati, Interati, who will speak in a bit, the architect, uh, for the development explained, a bocce court, a tennis court, uh, half-court basketball court, all which we all acknowledge are recreational opportunities. None of them will comply because they're not forty by forty at least. So he's saying every single spot on this needs to be forty by forty. That leads to an absurd result of all these, what are clearly recognized as usable open space and recreation not being included. Now, we do provide areas, as stated in Mr. Kitchen's, uh, Z E O's Kitchen's interpretation, that are ninety-five by forty feet, that have grassed areas that, um, you know, children can play in, that people can.
What are those, what are those spaces?
They're in the, uh, rear of the, uh, development, I believe. And it's cited in Mr., um, actually in Z E O's Kitchen, uh, thing, he says, uh, ninety-five feet by forty feet, four thousand eighty-five square feet space on the right side, ninety-five by thirty, twenty-eight hundred square feet on the right rear side. Um, he, he mentioned those, so those are two areas now. They also have linear quite more than forty feet, but five feet in width trail system or sidewalks that circumvent the property, where people can walk, can jog, can, children can ride bikes, scooters, uh, strollers with, you know, uh, parents can take their children on a walk with strollers that is provided out there. So each one of those areas has at least one distance of forty feet. The most expansive way to read it, and I believe the way, uh, Z E O Kitchen read it, is not every single dimension needs to be forty feet, but at least one of those dimensions needs to be a minimum of forty feet, which is what is applied. So once again, we're not asking you, nor is it your charge to look at this site plan and say, we believe that open space and recreation is the most appropriate layout and will provide for the residents of the development. That's the job of the planning board. Your job is to interpret that one provision as to what does that mean? And I think under the law, giving it the most expansive definition and resolving the ambiguity in favor of the property owner, you would come to the result that Z E O Kitchen did, that this qualifies numerically as open space. Once again, and I'll repeat, the layout, the design is all being, uh, you know, reviewed by the planning board. So that is, you know, the, the clear law, and I don't, you know, I don't want to get into a long-winded, but it's very clear that if you could figure, if you could look at it one way or the other, you're required to look at it in favor of the property owner to allow us to go to the planning board, to have the planning board review and determine which, what is the best design.
In summary, what I'm hearing you say is the interpretation should re, should be only one dimension needs to be forty feet.
Exactly.
Not, not, not two dimensions.
Which would, because otherwise it would add to the absurd, absurd result of all of these uses that we just discussed not being permitted as open space, which is not what we believe what was intended. Now, as far as precedent, if the city council thinks this is a bad precedent, the city council has it within their power to look at that definition and to revise that definition to make it more clear so everyone knows. But you're dealing with the definition as it exists today. And as it exists today, we believe Z E O Kitchen has made the appropriate determination in interpreting this, and we're requesting that, uh, you uphold it. I want to, for one minute, discuss the, um, the accessibility requirement, because I don't believe that's appropriate, and I set that forth in my letter appropriately before you, because that's a site plan objective for the planning board to consider. The planning board hasn't granted site plan approval, so we don't know what they'll be looking for, but it's up to them to determine what they believe is appropriate for accessibility. These, these units will be accessible, they will meet all requirements. We believe, we've demonstrated on the site plan, and whatever the planning board would think they need to be confident, whether it's a condition of approval that it, the interior design needs.
That was, that was taken off the table, so I really.
Okay, well, I, I don't know if it was a faulty set as submitted, so I just wanted to, uh, present that.
Just to point out that that was off the table, so we have.
If we can just clarify, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I believe that council is correct. Mr. Gordon indicated that he was not going to address that during his presentation this evening, but it certainly has not been taken off the table.
Off the table, off the table.
And you're all gonna have to make that determination.
Off the table tonight, then.
Well, but Mr. Capello certainly has the, um, option to address that in his presentation this evening, despite the fact that Mr. Gordon declined to present it in his oral presentation. It is part of the appeal.
So I just want to reiterate, I don't believe the planning board has made a decision. I believe it's their decision, and once they make that decision, I don't believe that decision is appealable to this board. You've reviewed determinations of the C E O as to the interpretation of the code, not to the planning board, as how to, how they use and determine whether to approve or deny a site plan and, and appropriately apply the objectives. So with that, you know, certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy, uh, to introduce you. We do have our planner, Mr. Rudikoff, and our architect, Mr. Interati, to also just provide a little testimony.
Yeah, I, I really don't want it to be redundant, though.
Okay.
If it's been covered already, I, I would think.
Well, if you have any questions for, let me.
I'd rather do.
If you have any questions.
Rather than hear everything.
They're available, okay.
Different, but certainly if you want him to speak, he can. But if it's areas that we've already covered, I'm gonna interject that. So would you like him to still speak?
Well, I would ask them if you would, but, I mean.
Well, I would like to hear what, I would like to hear what some of the other people say. And if there's a comment that I want to make, I'll, I'll raise my hand and see if you're willing to recognize it.
Good, because I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, and I'd like to hear from the, if there's anyone from the public. And, um, thank you for that, um, consideration.
Thank you.
At this point, uh, are there any questions from board members of either attorney?
I have no questions.
Okay, no one has any questions? Is there anyone?
I, I, I do have just one.
Okay.
The only thing that we're, we're, uh, really questioning is the interpretation of the forty foot.
Yes.
Or are we so interpreting the complete calculation of the square footage?
Well, we're, one depends on the other, depending on how you interpret the forty foot, uh, required.
There, there is one other thing that would.
Numbers as a total.
True, but there's one other thing that is, which doesn't seem clear in Eric's letter, and I, I, you know, I only got on to this process as of yesterday, I'm still kind of onboarding here, so I haven't read through all the attorney's letters. But, uh, whether or not the, the trap, you know, the sidewalk area includes the crosswalks or not. Like, does it include, a- a- and that was part of Mr. Gordon's argument, is, is that is the square footage area of the sidewalks, which are being counted as open space, does that square footage area also include those areas crossing places where vehicular traffic crosses?
Can you answer that question?
Yeah.
The, they do.
Who are you, sir?
Oh, I'm Ciro Interanti, I'm the architect for the project. My office is located at twenty-five Marcus.
The gentleman speaking before with the headphones.
This is Matt Rudikoff, who's the environmental, uh, land use and zoning planner.
I thought you were the architect, okay. Thank you.
You're right. I'm the, my office is at twenty-five Marcus Street in Poughkeepsie, New York. The crosswalks are intended to connect the sidewalks and the, and the walking path. I would like to make a few other comments, uh, regarding, uh, Mr. Gordon's comments. Uh, we, we, we're, our position is that we do meet the intention of the code. If, if the interpretation is that the, that each minimum dimension needs to be forty feet, then all the walking paths in New York State, maybe not all the walking paths in New York State, but all the walking paths in the city of Kingston would have to be forty feet wide. And I don't think that that's the intention of the way the code was written. We meet all the other, uh, requirements of the, of the, of the, uh, code, the way, the, uh, for the definition of, uh, open space, the way it was written. We do, and we do feel as though that the sidewalks and the walking path should be included and are included in the total that we're presenting as far as the total square footage is concerned.
What about the sidewalks crossing? Uh, and again, I don't, not looking at it as the picture or the photo or anything. What about the sidewalks, Mr. Gordon said, that crosses the parking lot?
Those are intended to connect the sidewalks. So if you take that number out, we're still over the eighteen thousand square feet.
Well, it's interesting you said that, because minus the three walkways, it's about one thousand fifty square feet, and Mr. Kitchen's total was twenty-one thousand, uh, or twenty-two thousand six fourteen. If you subtract out the one thousand fifty, it gives you twenty-one thousand, so.
I have thirty-one thousand.
I'm assuming that's the only ones that are there, I'm not looking at a, at a drawing.
Anthony?
Yes.
Tony, I'm sorry, I gotta get used to calling you Tony, and, um, Mr. Interante, um, interjected in response to Anthony's question. I believe that, um, Mr. Kitchen should be responding to that question as to whether or not in his calculations, he included those crosswalks. And, you know, while I certainly appreciate Mr. Interante's opinion with regard to that, the, for the record, the real question is whether or not the Z E O included that, and I would like Eric to speak about that, or speak to that.
Good point. Eric?
Yes.
John, did you get the question?
So we're talking about these three walkways that lead to the, we'll call them, uh, one second here.
The circular recreation.
I, I just want to find in my, in my letter where I have written this down, so I could further explain it. Um, yeah, so there's three walkways I put on the site plan. First of all, the loop that goes around the outside is a recreational loop. I don't consider that a sidewalk.
The three walk, what you said, the three walkways that account for a thousand fifty.
They connect, they, they connect to, uh, eighteen-foot diameter circular areas that have benches that can be used by the occupants for relaxing and whatever enjoyment that they want. I, I believe that those, those, um, those eighteen-foot diameter circular areas, um, are for recreational purposes. Now, the walkways that connect these, there's a series of three, actually, so there's six, six circular, uh, six circular areas with benches connected by a pathway in between each, each, each pair. Um, and I believe that's what Mr., uh, Gordon is alluding to when he talks about pathways or sidewalks. Um, I did not include any other sidewalks in my interpretation. Uh, these are just, this is just a pathway to get from one recreational area to another that cuts across the parking lot there.
Well, yeah, that, that's my question.
But like you said, Mr., uh, Chairman, um, yes, if we did take out those pathways that connect the recreational circles, uh, where the benches are gonna go, uh, there would still be, uh, above the threshold of the, uh.
Twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Correct.
Cause you have three, three walkways of seventy by five, three hundred fifty times three is a thousand fifty. My man.
Correct, yeah, so you have six eighteen foot diameter. Uh, circular areas that are gonna be, have plantings and benches where people can sit and. And communicate and talk and get to know their neighbors there.
Okay, do we have anybody from the public that wants to comment?
I believe Anthony, Anthony, was your question answered, or do you need to follow up on that?
Really, I want, I want to know if any of, any of the stuff that was used to calculate open space is space that. Is subject to crossing vehicular traffic.
Okay, so yes.
Like, are there crosswalks that cross the lot that are included in that number?
Okay, yes, yes, that would be the three pathways that connect the six circular areas, uh, with the benches.
And that's the only, that's the only part included in, in your open space category.
That's correct.
Those paths.
Correct, the other opens, I could tell you what the other open spaces are, make it clear.
That's fine, it's really the only concern that I have is those areas subject to vehicular traffic.
In the middle of the project, there are three separate walkways that connect two big circular. Bench areas on each side of, uh, the inner, the inner, uh, in between the buildings.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask again, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak, Eric, on this, you know?
Well, everybody in the public is currently muted, I can. They could unmute their phones if they want to speak, um. I mean, hold on, maybe I'm just gonna have to go ahead and unmute everybody to see, ask them all to unmute.
They could in the chat, if someone wants to speak, I think they could chat and say, please unmute me.
Not if they're on, if they're calling in.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, so.
Just, just bear with me, Tony.
All right.
And actually, there was one other thing I wanted Eric to clarify for the record with regard.
I believe there's one person that wants to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a Mark N, do you want to speak? Mark, go ahead.
He wrote there, from Mark N to everyone, I would like to speak, I see that on the screen.
Correct.
But is he, he doesn't maybe know how to unmute himself? Okay, well, if we can't hear, you can't hear him.
Eric, as the, um, as the organizer, I think you might have to allow him to unmute.
Yeah, I've been doing that and.
He's showing as unmuted.
He's showing. One is up there, but, okay, at this.
Mark, Mark, we can't hear you, Mark.
All right, I don't think we're gonna get Mark on, so. Mark, if you can hear us, please submit your comments to Mr. Kitchen and he will submit them to the board.
He can, he can put his comment in chat right now.
Well, he's got, he's on chat, so.
Or you can put them in writing and we can certainly circulate it, circulated to the board. And the board can consider them prior to, uh, rendering it.
Someone else that wants to speak, Tony.
Okay, who?
Please state your name for the record.
John Dowley.
I'm sorry, one second, John who?
Dowley, D O W L E Y. I live at two sixty-two Lucas Avenue. Directly opposite Blue Stone Commons project.
Go ahead, Mr. Dowley.
I think if you tell Mark to, or ask Mark to press star six on his phone, that will unmute him. So he can speak for myself, um, I do not understand, uh, why. Uh, it appears that some of you on the zoning board don't have the correct plans in front of you to be able to actually visualize. What the attorneys are, are discussing, number one.
The, the plans were revised.
Two, I don't understand, I don't understand the, um, purpose of open space. If it's for recreation, um, I don't understand how sidewalks can contribute to that. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. All right, uh, again, the, uh, other gentleman, if you would submit your comments and email to Mr. Kitchen tomorrow, he will. Get them to the board members for consideration.
All right, so Mark, Mark.
He's got it in chat.
Mark has typed a chat here. Mark says, I would like to point out, there's a fourth path to the left of the three walkways. Noted that also crosses the parking lot, uh, but that was not included in the, um. That was not included in, in my determination.
Okay.
Can I just get one more clarification, the, the most recent plan is the two twenty-one plan? That's the, that's the most recent drawings?
Shiro, that's a question for Shiro.
No, it's not.
I believe it, I believe it was after, I believe it might have been in May.
It was actually, uh. Most recently, we delivered, we delivered, um, nine sixteen, I believe it was.
Oh, then those are not on the planning boards, uh.
But the, um, the drawing, uh, S P ten did not change since the last supplemental check.
The, Mr.
Fundamentally the same as the one from two twenty-one.
Right, Mr. Kitchen's determination says I have in my possession, the revised version dated May fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Which seems to indicate that that's the latest version, I think there was one.
That's what, that's what my determinate, determination came from, yes.
May fifth.
Correct.
That did not change, uh, with our last supplemental.
Okay, so it's May fifth. All right, at this point, um, what, uh, Dan.
Yeah, Tony.
Yes, Dan.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to move briefly on to, um, the A D A issue, just to clarify the record with regard. To the second part of this appeal and, uh, Mr. Capella certainly touched upon it, Mr. Gordon passed. On, um, presenting with regard to that, Mr. Capella's, um, you know, argument with regard to the A D A issue is that. Basically, it's not ripe at this point. Um, I would also just like Eric or either, or, or Mr. Capella, Mr. Gordon certainly has the opportunity to respond. To clarify the process whereby A D A accessibility is reviewed and, um, confirmed. During, um, the certificate of occupancy process and during, uh, further site plan reviews, just so that.
All right, so, so I can show that.
Hold on, hold, hold on a minute. I have a question for Dan before we do all that, there was an argument made. That that really is not within our purview of hearing a determination. It's because it's a planning board function, our purview is to make a determ, uh, make a decision on determinations of. Zoning enforcement officer and not planning board activity, is there any merit to that, Dan, to that argument?
Uh, that is an issue that this board is gonna have to address during deliberations over the course of the next month. However, and that is the primary argument that's being raised by Mr. Capella. If this board decides that it is in fact ripe, this board also needs to consider whether, um, given. Um, site plan requirements and, um, certificate of occupancy reviews. Whether or not that A D A compliance is, um, you know, properly, um, you know, considered. And at what, I mean, at what stage the A D A compliance is properly considered. So I would like Eric, just to clarify, in the process of issuing the C of O. Is there any further review of A D A compliance? And how does that, um, and how does that occur? And what is the standard that they have to meet in securing the certificate of occupancy?
So the building inspector, um, before he issues a certificate of occupancy. He addresses all the A D A issues in chapter eleven of the New York State Building Code, okay? Um, and at that point in time, if the, if the prop, if the project is not A D A compliant, it will not get a C of O until it is. But that will be the building inspector, who's the one that issues the C of O. And he's the one that will go by chapter eleven of the New York State Building Code, which addresses A D A compliance.
I think you just answered my question, but anyway, we'll continue to, um, consider that. Matter, I guess. All right, at this point, um, what Dan had said was that we will keep the public hearing, what I consider always call public hearing open. Uh, there will, will be an opportunity for the attorneys to send in, uh, additional supplemental arguments or discussion. And the zoning board will deliberate, we will speak to counsel. And, um, the decision will be written and hopefully at the next meeting, the October meeting, a decision will be rendered.
Tony, if you get a chance, can I just say one more word?
Sure.
Because Mark N is, uh, making a comment. Um, that the fourth pathway is highlighted in the May plan, I have a usable open space. What I want to say is, the, the project. Uh, architect and whoever developed the plans with him submitted me a set of plans and they outlined where they felt the open space was, see. I had to go through there and make the arguments to say what I would accept is open space. So I didn't necessarily accept what the, what the architects had outlined on the plans, okay? But I had to go through and, and, and identify what I thought was, um, usable open space. Um, and that's where I came up with my twenty-two thousand.
I only have one question for you. The determination that I'm looking at, two pages, whatever, very lengthy determination. That's your determination.
Correct.
Not, there's nothing that needs to be corrected, there's nothing that needs to be added, there's nothing that has to be reconsidered. What we see is what it is.
Correct.
Determination, and that's what we'll base our decision on.
Correct.
That, that's all I want to hear. So we, between now and the October meeting, we will deliberate, we will speak with Dan. I would make a suggestion, if any of the board members have questions about these recreational areas, go down and see Eric. You gotta wear a mask, but go down and see Eric and look at the map, and look at the drawings. And see for yourself what he's describing.
Yes.
Determination, what he's describing is determination should be applicable to the drawing.
Correct.
Be very relevant to be able to say, this is the recreation area. Where is it in your determination that you make reference, cause you're very specific on the recreation area.
Yes, and I have certain.
And there's square footage.
Everything circled in red on, on the plans here for you to look at.
So if anybody on the board wants to go down, certainly, like I said, you gotta wear, right, Eric, you can come down.
Correct, you have to wear a mask. Uh, please let me know ahead of time when you're coming up, because sometimes I'm in the middle of things. So if I know when you're coming, I could put some time aside to spend with you.
Okay, great, I, I'm just new on getting on board with this project, so I would like to, uh, make a arrangements to see you on that, Eric.
Yeah, so give me a call tomorrow, Donna, have you come down and put the big, 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 uh, the big plans on a table and I can go over everything with you.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, Tony, my preference before we break this evening is that, um. The board and myself have a brief discussion with regard to the matter before we conclude the meeting. There are certain other issues that we also need to discuss. Um, my only question is whether or not we want counsel to stand by in case there are. Further questions after we speak, or if you want.
I just want to discuss, I just like to discuss among, now, should I hold off on a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting and table? The future, next consideration and next.
Consultation with counsel is not part of the public meeting anyway, so you can adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Um, you know, um, and.
Able to.
And we can speak thereafter.
Okay, good, okay, at this point, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And, um, table the matter until the next meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second.
Hold on, Donna, and then Anthony. All in favor?
Anthony, your little one hasn't been added to the board, though, by the way, just so you know.
One in favor, I, oh.
I.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I guess we just did adjourn the meeting, right?
Yes.
All right, so before we move forward. Dan, what do you want me to do as far as recording, should we, uh?
There is no recording of the attorney client discussion, I just want to have a discussion.
Sorry, Dan, what did you say? I can't hear you.
There's no recording of executive session.
I know, so you need to hold on, we still have people in here that I gotta get out of the room.
All right, we'll wait.
Um, everybody, at this point in time, the meeting is over, except for the board members, myself and the attorney.
Take care, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Tony, gotta give me a couple seconds here, this could take a.
Thank you all.
Eric, take your time and board members, please stay on.
Don't people just start hanging up?
Gotta hang up.
Three, three, one, eleven twenty-three, please hang up your phone.
Up in the corner, eight, four, five, three, three, one.
Eleven twenty-three, please hang up your phone. Okay.
Can't you just mute, can't you do something, drop them?
I just removed them, hold on.
There, okay, there's Anthony.
Hold on, please.
All right, we're holding on, we're not doing anything.
All right, I get, you know, this, this is not the, easy.
I know. We're waiting.
Gotta stop recording.
Take your time.